It's six o'clock according to Brian Bartlett. So at this time, I would like to call the meeting of the Harden County School Board to order. And first of all, we're going to ask you to join us in the pledge of the flag.
Pledge to the flag. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And with no disrespect to the flag, I had a little surgical procedure, so I've got some cover up there that I didn't want to uncover. All right, Board commitments. Don, you want to read those for us?
I can. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And recognitions tonight, Ms. Sherry Barnes, who's new board member, the first night for, I guess, an official meeting with us. So we appreciate her stepping up to the plate and offering to take over the vacancy that was left open. So thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right. And Mr. Greg Sutton, you going to handle the other recognitions?
Yes, sir. Chairman Wise, we have some HCS Stronger Together awards we'd like to present tonight. So if you will pass a resolution for these recognitions, we'd like to get started.
Okay.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
All right. The first recognition we have tonight is Ms. Melissa Bigler. Melissa Bigler, if you're here, come on up and we're going to stand up here while we talk about you. So come on down, let's go recognize. Everybody give her a round of applause. Yeah. Ms. Bigler is the academic coach at the College View Campus. She has already assessed and analyzed each student and designed interventions targeted to their identified needs. She works with them individually and in in-class settings. In addition to these tasks, she has ensured that each classroom and teacher was ready to deliver interactive learning with students as soon as they entered the building. She also guides staff as they work to complete their required professional development hours during the year. She consistently goes above and beyond with a cheerful countenance and professionalism with every interaction. I've seen a lot of the work she does over there personally this year. Greatly appreciate Ms. Bigler. Let's give her a big round of applause. Good. Our next recognition, I'd like to have Ms. Regina Ehlum. Come on down, Ms. Ehlum. Ms. Ehlum is an assistant to high school EBD unit at College View Campus. She works daily with at-risk students who are working through trauma and multiple disabilities. She serves as the trainer for new classified staff and often takes it upon herself to help staff develop the necessary skills to effectively accomplish their assigned responsibilities and build relationships with students. She is always the first to volunteer for any need, always putting other needs above her own. She sets the standard for all classified staff regarding professionalism and dedication to the mission to helping students, no matter who they are or what their needs may be. Let's give it up for Ms. Ehlum tonight. Next up, we have Ms. Terry Christensen. Come on down. Give it up for Ms. Christian. Oh, come on down. Terry Christian is a wonderful HCS volunteer who Central Harden High School Principal Tim Isis calls his behind-the-scenes get-things-done-go-to person. She has served on the CHHS Site-Based Decision-Making Council as the proud mother of a class of 2021 Central Harden alum Keegan and a current senior Sam. Mr. Isaac says her never-quits attitude is an inspiration to her sons, her family, and the Central Harden family. She is dedicated to helping students succeed in and outside of the classroom and is always willing to help with any task with which Mr. Isaac's administrative team approaches her with. When the district was providing meals to shut-ins at the end of the 2019-20 school year, Terry and her children were in line often to take meals to those who could not get food because of underlying health conditions. She is a true friend of the district and a Central Harden High School alum. Thank you so much. Chairman Wise, our student recognition could not make it this evening. At the family's request, they would like to ask that we present the award to them at the October board meeting. If that's okay.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir. All right, that's all we have.
Okay. And you've got focus on academics. You've got anything to go there?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Back again.
You didn't get off that easy.
Didn't go. I wanted to make sure I brought our Director of Special Education here tonight, Ms. Jessica Purchase-Taylor. She took on an inner position about a year and a half ago and did such a great job, we put her in the full-time position. This is a massive job in a district of our size with a number of students that we service with certain learning needs. And I wanted to give a chance to kind of spotlight the great things she's doing in that department through our co-teaching models with our teachers across the district. So I want to bring up Jessica Purchase-Taylor here to say a few things to you tonight.
Okay.
Good evening. Just, I'm a little taller than Greg. So just to start, just a little context for special ed in the district. So we have about 2,600 students with disabilities in Harden County schools, ranging everywhere from students with really severe disabilities who are on alternate assessment or not on that regular diploma track, all the way to students who have other health impairments and OHI and kind of everything in between. We have around 200 certified staff members serving special ed in our district. We have 18 low-incidence classrooms, so again, that's those students who are in that more severe category. And the rest of our students pretty much receive services in a resource, so they're kind of pulled out some, or in a co-teach setting, which co-teaches general ed. And the definition of that is two certified teachers, one regular ed, one special ed in the same classroom. We have really focused on co-teaching for about three years in this district and really focusing on getting students with disabilities greater access to the general ed curriculum. In those classrooms, the gen ed teacher's primary goal is to focus on the content because they are the content specialist. And our special ed teacher's goal is really the differentiation in providing that specially-designed instruction. We kind of started this initiative by asking schools to identify one team per building. And co-teaching is part of the continuum of special ed services. But we really wanted to get better at it. We were seeing a lot of situations where we were not maximizing our personnel. So we asked schools initially, three years ago, to pick one team per building for us to really coach and kind of improve those practices. And then we have grown that, and now we are expecting that for all ELA, English Language Arts and Math classes that have, that co-teach those two teachers. The models that we're focusing on really are two. The first one is station teaching, which essentially is what it sounds like from small groups. We're rotating to meet those differentiated needs. And the other one is alternative teaching, which is kind of a hybrid model of some whole group with some small group. A little bit of why we co-teach and why we have been so intent on focusing on this is honestly, it benefits all students. Because when we, what we know is that when students are more engaged, which they are when they're in smaller groups, our learning goes up, our opportunities to respond for students goes up, our behavior concerns go down because students are more engaged and they have more opportunities for feedback. At the district level, we have done walkthroughs twice per year to try to provide not just, here's what you're doing wrong, but positive feedback as well as additional coaching opportunities. And we are continuing to do that. We're really working on increasing teacher parity so that both teachers being seen as valuable certified staff members with respect and responsible in responsibilities. We have developed a phasing system this year. Because of turnover, we have a lot of new teachers every year. We have a lot of new teachers who are Option 6 certified, meaning that they have a bachelor's degree in something else, and they're in a master's program to get their, to work on their special ed certification. We have some teachers who are emergency certified, meaning they're not yet in a program, but we're emergency certifying them. So we have kind of lots of different knowledge levels coming in. So we've worked on a phasing system with some expectations for training, expectations around co-teaching, what models we expect to see. We want them to start with their first year, just get good at one, and then we'll add additional models. We're seeing a lot of success. Unfortunately, because of pandemic, we don't have a lot of achievement data in terms of our test scores around that. But what we do know is with our district's assessment data, our classroom data, we're seeing a lot of growth in students and a lot of benefit to all students because of the co-teach work and our co-teach emphasis. Any questions? There was a lot of information really fast.
I have a question about, you said you're working on teacher parity, and that between the co-teachers?
Yes. So what happens kind of over time is what we've seen historically, and not just here everywhere, is the gen ed teacher is seen as the teacher, and everybody sees the special ed teacher as the helper. And so understanding that both teachers are certified, both teachers have value and things to bring and deserve respect as both certified teachers. Yeah. And that's both between the teachers and also with students. Sometimes you'll hear students say, well, that's our helper, that's our teacher, but that's our helper. So really working on establishing both of those roles as teachers.
All right. Thank you.
They have done an absolute phenomenal job in assisting our teachers, making them gain the confidence. They have a lot of ability, we just have to instill that confidence, and they have done a fantastic job with that. And our students are definitely benefiting from their work. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have recognition of visitors, and we have several ed signed up. And Ms. Johnson is going to read our protocol here for speaking tonight.
Again, thank everyone for coming out. As we talked about at the last meeting, we do have just some general guidelines for visitors. Anyone that was wanting to speak should have already signed up on the sheet, but we're going to go through a few of the points that are the same as they were last time. Only those who have signed in to speak to the board will do so during board meetings. The signing sheet will be brought in as it was for the recognition of visitors. Please limit all comments to between three and five minutes or less. We will recognize those speakers who signed up before we get to the recognition of visitors item on the agenda. Anyone who calls out from the crowd could be asked to leave the meeting. Please state the facts of your concern. Comments that result in personal attacks against any individual program or school are not acceptable and will not be tolerated during meetings. When it is your turn to speak, please go to the podium. Please state your name, the community in which you reside, and your concern. There will not be a discussion with the board regarding your concern. We will listen and will take note of it. However, the board will not answer the questions or engage in conversations with you regarding any topic, as has been our practice. Again, we appreciate you taking the time to be here, because we all share a common interest, the students of Harden County schools. And we know everybody will do a great job as they did last month.
All right, thank you, Don. First speaker will be Brooke French, a concerned mother.
My name is Brooke French. I'm the mother of two children in the Harden County school system, and I'm here this evening to speak to you about my children's God-given body sovereignty. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same, or one day we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free. President Ronald Reagan made this insightful observation many years ago. Today, more than ever, it speaks volumes to me. I see as a country, as a state, as a county, we are to fork in the road. We, the people, can choose to stand up for our children and their future freedom, or we can roll over and let big government impose medical tyranny on us. I'm not anti-mask, I'm not anti-vax, I'm for freedom to choose. I am for body sovereignty. I'm for informed consent. I'm for parental choice. We, as parents, know our children best. We should be making the decisions on what is best for our children. I don't co-parent with this board, I don't co-parent with the Kentucky Board of Education, the Harden County Health Department, Andy Beshear, nor Joe Biden. Freedom is at stake. I can see the bigger picture. Today is masks and tests to stay. What will it be tomorrow? Will you be trying to mandate the COVID vaccine on our children? Will you be trying to mandate the COVID vaccine on your employees? A vaccine that no matter how the FDA play it is still in trials. A vaccine that has countless adverse reactions and deaths to its credit. Do I need to remind you of some of the drugs, and yes, these are drugs, that the FDA has given the green light only to retract? Do I need to remind you that Pfizer received the largest criminal fine in history in 2009? Having had up close and personal experience with COVID, it only solidified my stance that treatment should not be doled out as one-size-fits-all. I've said it before and I will say it again, the fear mongering needs to stop. COVID is here to stay. Each home has the God-given right to research and decide what is best for those they love. My children's rights, nor my parental rights, don't end where another's fears begin. Medical freedom and body sovereignty are necessary in the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, which are my children's unalienable rights that are endowed to them by their Creator. Without sovereignty over one's body, how can a person ever be free? In closing, you asked for grace at our last meeting. We gave grace all of last school year. It was all brand-new, and yes, a little scary. I have since spent countless hours researching and reaching out to people to come to my own conclusions. Yes, COVID is real. Am I living in fear? No. I believe we can make the right choices for our homes and our children, and the government in all capacities needs to step off our rights. Parental choice is the way to go.
Dolly Gunther.
My name is Dolly Gunther. I'm here to support children to not be forced to wear a mask or be forced to be vaccinated. And I'm coming with the facts, and these are government facts. The FDA just recently approved the Pfizer vaccine. The FDA, for a long time, has recalled lots of drugs that they had originally approved of. Here is one of 37 pages of the drugs the FDA has recalled since 2017. There are 10 medications per page. In the Kentucky Revised Statute 214.036, "Exception to Testing or Immunization Requirement." Number 1, B, the immunization of any child whose parents or guardian are opposed to medical immunization against disease and who object by a written sworn statement to the immunization of such child based on religious grounds. C, the immunization of any emancipated minor or adult who is opposed to medical immunization against disease and who objects by a written sworn statement to the immunization based on religious grounds. 2B, the immunization of any child whose parents or guardian are opposed to medical immunization against disease and who object by a written sworn statement to the immunization based on religious grounds or conscientiously held beliefs. The next one is U.S. Code 1520A, "Restrictions on Use of Human Subjects for Testing of Chemical or Biological Agents." Prohibited Activities, any test of experiment involving the use of a chemical agent or biological agent on a civilian population, or any other testing of a chemical agent or biological agent on human subjects. Subjects to subsections, C, D, and E for the prohibition in subsections does not apply to a test or experiment carried out for any of the following purposes: medical, therapeutic, pharmaceutical, agricultural, industrial, or research activity; any purpose that is directly related to protection against toxic chemicals or biological weapons and agents. These are exceptions. Any law enforcement purpose, any purpose related to riot control. Biological agent defined is a microorganism, including bacteria, viruses, and there's a whole other list. Naturally occurring, bioengineered, sensitized component of such microorganisms causing, capable of causing death, disease, biological malfunction in a human, an animal, a plant, or another living organism. Deterioration of food, water, equipment, supplies, materials of any kind, or alteration of the environment. Now, these are the exceptions. This is what they can do to us. That's a biological agent, and it's a virus. I'm not saying it is, but a lot of things going on in this country, it seems to be. Now, the FDA approved the COVID vaccine August 23, 2021, and that was the Pfizer vaccine. And I'll go back to that list again of 300, over 376, 37 pages of recalled medications and drugs. And the last thing I'm going to bring up, I'm going to pass on that one, excuse me. I'm going to do the Constitution. Article 713 states neither slavery or nonvoluntary servitude. Article 714th Amendment says no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Kentucky Bill of Rights, Section 10 states, the people shall, excuse me, the people shall be secure in their persons, house, papers, and possessions from unreasonable search and seizure. Will you uphold the Constitution? As board members, you want to keep our children first, as she stated. But will you keep our children first? Will you keep the children first? If after all the evidence that is presented to you, and there is plenty more out there, and you are in favor of masks and vaccination to our children, please step down from your position and let those who really will represent the children be given the chance to take a stand for them. As all of you, as teachers, all of you, as well as teachers and staff, are paid with tax dollars, no matter if it is from local, state, or federal, it is tax dollars. It is not government dollars. It is tax dollars. As a 20-plus-year government employee, I was paid with tax dollars, not government dollars. I was, I was and still am a victim of government corruption, and I now advocate against government corruption. Our militaries and our veterans are heroes, and I am for we, the people.
Jenny Bowman, accountability.
My name is Jenny Bowman with Moms for Liberty, Harden County Chapter. My goal tonight is to hold all of you accountable. I have some email correspondence that our chapter has had with you guys over the last couple of months, and I would like to refer to those now. On July 19, we respectfully requested from the board no masks for teachers and students for the upcoming school year. At the time, Harden County schools had no masking requirements. Mr. Bland responded that he did not foresee mask requirements to be implemented unless the governor and/or KDE implements a legally binding mask requirement that must be followed as a matter of law. Fast forward to today, the governor and the Kentucky Department of Education do not have the power to implement mandatory masks now. Ms. Johnson responded, the only way she sees mask mandates becoming an issue is if it becomes a legal mandate from Frankfurt. Again, today, there is no such legal mandate. On August 10, we asked Mr. Wise to call a special board meeting to show us the data used to make the decision to mask staff and children. His response was, it is out of our hands now that the governor has mandated masking in all of Kentucky schools. Today, you cannot blame the mask mandate on the governor. On August 18, we asked Mr. Seago if the board had discussed making a plan under HB1. Mr. Seago responded, without regard to whether masking prevents illness, one thing is certain, masking means the Kentucky Department of Health and the Lincoln Trail Health Department won't place as many students and staff in quarantine. And at the present, that's the limiting factor on holding in-person school. We're not worried we'll have to close due to illness, but rather because so many people would be quarantined that we couldn't legally hold classes. Since this comment was made, Lincoln Trail Health Department has now given Harden County schools the power to contact trace and quarantine our kids. The governor, the Kentucky Department of Education, the Kentucky Board of Education, and the Lincoln Trail Health Department have no power to mask mandate or shut schools down. We also now have tests to stay, which allows kids in close contact the ability to stay in school with a negative test. So the statement, masking keeps us from quarantining, and so many people being quarantined would not allow us to hold classes, no longer applies. On August 24, we asked if mask choice would ever be Harden County schools' end goal. Mr. Bland responded that, I have no doubt that the preferred choice of every member of the board is to have no mandatory mask requirement. But as you are already aware, we have an obligation to follow the law, whether we like it or not. Harden County Schools is one of the largest school districts in the state, and we cannot put it at risk with board decisions that openly violate established law. As long as there is a legal binding obligation on us, we will follow the law. Again, board, there is no legally binding obligation on you today. Legally, no one is masking our children except our Board of Education and superintendent. These emailed statements told us that the only reason not to have mask choice would be a legal mandate either from the governor or KDE. Those have been lifted. Why would you make these statements if you did not intend to keep them? I want to know who voted yes, yes, to mask mandates and who voted no. I would like to know where I can find that information. On August 12, when schools started with masks, the positivity rate was 11.57%. On September 15, the positivity rate was 13.02%. The numbers should be decreasing if the masks worked. Please tell me how mandatory masking in schools, when our kids are required to wear masks nowhere else, is a good decision? Moms for Liberty is not anti-mask. We are for mask choice. We know as parents what is best for our kids. You, the Board of Education, should not be making parental decisions for our children. When you took this job, did you expect to be making parental decisions? You have been to our seniors' graduation ceremonies while we sat on our couch at home and could not attend, and you have continued to strip us of our parental rights when it comes to health decisions. You continue to make parental decisions for our kids, and you are not their parents. Give us our parental rights back and allow for choice when it comes to our children's health. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Katie Keery, accountability.
Hello, my name is Katie Keery. I'm with Moms for Liberty, Harden County Chapter, and tonight I would like to speak about accountability. After the last board meeting, I emailed several questions. Thank you, Steve Bland, for being the only response. I made some suggestions to be implemented and was told that they would be considered. I would like to update you and let you know that clearly they were not considered enough to be implemented. So here's my update for East Harden Middle School. Teachers are still allowed to take mask breaks at their desks while our kids are not. Did you know that there are no scheduled mask breaks for the kids of East except for lunch? Did you know that mask breaks that were given last year were taken away this year because kids had bad behavior? So the whole school gets punished for a few. We're talking about breathing. Ms. Nichol responded to a mom with a concern also about no mask breaks and was told that they are to be taken in the courtyard while changing classes. My daughter and nephew report that this is an almost impossible feat to accomplish. My daughter and nephew report that this is an almost impossible feat to accomplish and still try to make it to class on time. This would affect any child with anxiety. It sounds like a great idea, but it's not. This gives kids a fifteen-minute lunch break and approximately one minute and fifteen seconds out of a seven-hour day to breathe God-given air. So again, this time, I would love to demand that Hardin County Schools implement some changes. I would also like to point out some hypocrisy that students and parents notice. Some bus drivers drive with mask under their nose or no mask at all. The mom who took this picture, which I have a picture here, which I can send by email, the mom who took this picture said that the bus driver saw her taking the picture of her and told Mr. Macy, principal at North Hardin, to come over to the bus. He did go to the bus, at driver, and he did not instruct her to put a mask on. They pointed at this mom, laughed, and the bus driver drove off with no mask, and I don't think there was an explanation given. Kids have reported that the teachers that teach, are teaching, they teach while holding their mask. So a teacher at East is allowed to, to teach like this. So I'm asking if my kid can sit at her desk like this. It only seems fair. My child would love to sit at her desk doing that, and that's lower risk, she's not even speaking. According to Kentucky guidance, it is encouraged to let the kids be outside when they can. Ms. Nichol has backed this statement by saying she is allowing teachers to do this. Unfortunately, according to my child, none of her teachers are doing it, so maybe we should mandate that. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. We continue to mask, social distance, walk the same direction, not socialize in our schools, yet what results have we seen that are different? We even added a vaccine, a life-saving vaccine, yet you still implement the same things on our kids, and we are not getting a different result other than the decline of our children's mental health. I'm sure you've heard in northern Kentucky that kids are barking like dogs, and in our own county, we have kids that are acting like cats. They're called furries. We all know that our kids' mental health is declining. I'd like to end by just reminding you about critical thinking and how important it is. Mr. Isaac, Central Hardin High School principal, reminded me last year that it's important to teach critical thinking, that both sides of an issue should always be presented. The decisions the board make are typically always in favor of one side, and that side does not include choice. So I ask you these questions. Have you researched both sides of masking? Doctors with different opinions about vaccines and other methods to stay healthy rather than just vax and mask? Or are you simply afraid of the backlash you will get if you enact choice? It is not our low-risk children's responsibility to bear the burden of protecting every human from COVID. Thank you.
Jacob Clark.
I'm a Central Hardin graduate and concerned taxpayer, and I was made aware of some things that I'm not sure you guys would be aware of, or surely you'd take action. Apparently, there was a, let me pull it up, there was a picture of something in the band. Yeah, here we go. It's in some private group about the marching band, Central Hardin, individual, I'm not sure if I should name them right now, I can show you guys later. But anyway, they, they post, you know, this week is the deadlines for students to start their vaccination and not risk their final performances. And so then, you know, we've heard, I think it was a psychologist got up at the last meeting, talked about how that teachers are telling some students that if they don't get the vaccine, and if somebody in their family was to die, they are partially responsible for that, you know, shaming them for these, these different things, and like was mentioned, taking away mask breaks for bad behavior. So, and then another, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm like reporting things that other people are somewhat afraid to even come and try to address you folks with, really. Some of the reports are that, you know, of course, the masks are unsanitary, they're wearing them all day, different things. Elementary school teachers laughing and joking about some kids dropping their mask on the bathroom floor and then wearing them after that, continuing use. So just for perspective, you know, JCP, PS, Jefferson County Public Schools, they required masks from day one, and they were one of the first schools to shut down for their positivity rate. If you, if you go like logically and, and look at things, this, this mask here, the pores on this mask are point-three micron, okay? Virus particle is point-one-two micron, about, different viruses, very, very slightly. Now, bacteria size can be from five, actually like from one all the way up to ten micron, but average size of bacteria is about seven micron. So these masks are really good at trapping the bacteria, you understand, but as far as, and then we understand that the, the virus is more aerosol than they thought in the very beginning. So, you know, you got a really good opportunity to basically wear a Petri dish on your face all day, and like you say, you know, these kids, you know, one child, I actually talked to the child on the phone, and, you know, the, the teacher was going to punish this child by run, by, excuse me, walking three laps outdoors with the mask on, you know, and they, and they wanted me to talk to the child. So, you know, these things are happening, and, you know, of course, we want you guys just to drop the mask mandates. We think it's silly, but, you know, if you're not going to do that, at least address some of these issues where, you know, these things, these things are going on, you know, teachers, basically, this is coercion, you know, saying, you got to get your vaccines now to participate in, in band activities, you know, I mean, that's the way it reads to me, and I'd be glad to send you guys that image. So, you know, chafing, we've seen pictures, I've got loads of pictures that's been sent to me of children with rashes, chafing, chafing on the back of the ears, you know, so you can't just say, oh, it's just a mask, just wear a mask, okay? There is an amount of risk. Maybe you think it's a very low amount, but there is some amount of risk. So anytime there is any amount of risk involved, it has to be a choice. This is America. Anytime there's any amount of risk involved, you, you don't have the right to tell me or these individuals here that you must make your child take this risk, you know? So that's, tho, those are the things, you know, when, when there's risk, there must be choice, and, you know, more and more, we're seeing that in, it's, at least in the school setting with children zero to nineteen, you know, the masks are not doing what they originally intended to do, maybe had the greatest of intentions when they made these mandates, but, you know, and the, the risk of death of the virus for zero to nineteen is 0.0%. So, you know, we're putting these kids through all this stuff, mental illness in, in youth is up, some studies say four times, some studies say eight times, you know, men, but, you know, mental issues with, with our youth are skyrocketing and having these social issues. So, you know, please reconsider your mask mandate and, and at least address some of these issues with your staffing and, and things like that.
All right, thank you. Andra Jackson.
My name is Andra Lett Jackson. I do like to carry my born name.
Sorry about that.
I, I signs it like that. I just had a concern, and I know I had found out prior to coming, that you all cannot address us, but I would like to give my number, and I would like to hear back from you, Superintendent Morgan, so I don't know if you lost my number or not, but it was enough for me to come on today. On the contract, the direct contract worksheet, our granddaughter on the bus on August 23rd said that, they said that she was exposed, so therefore, we had to go through the process of the guideline you had on here. The first possible day for testing was going to be Saturday, Sunday, or Monday. So Monday, we did take our grandchild to be tested, but she could not return to school until the 31st, which was the next day. That was Tuesday, she went Wednesday, and Thursday, we received another call that she was exposed again. I'm just trying to get an understanding. School started on the 12th of August, and it seemed like my grandchild had been at home more than she's been in the classroom. So I'm just trying to seek an answer. I, I talked to my son, I didn't know whether or not we need to pull her out of Hardin County Schools, try to send her to another school, a private school that would be cost on us, but it was just that important for me, so that she can be in school. And so therefore, after being sent back home, then we had to test again on the 6th of, the day after Labor Day. She had to test again, and so therefore, that day, she tested negative again, and she was sent back. I'm just trying to look for a solution for our grandchild. She's only six years old, she don't understand a lot what's going on, and we try to tell her it's a virus in the land, but, and, and after talking with you, Ms. Morgan, I did discuss possibly that she could move, and what you said, it made a lot of sense. If she moved, she could be in direct contact again. She did move, and, and in three days, she was back at home again. So I'm just trying to look for an answer, and if you can call me back so we can try to see, and I know you all have come up with test to stay, and maybe that's the answer, I don't know, but another thing I was trying to understand, after being at home two times, is she really getting the dollars in the school? In Indiana, where my daughter is a principal and my son-in-law is assistant principal, after two times, you lose your dollars. So I don't know what Hardin County rule is, but I would just like to get some answers. My number's 2703173827, so that I can come to a conclusion what we need to do concerning our grandchild. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Construction updates, we had a report today from JRA at the noon meeting, and East Hardin is still, has some issues to be taken care of on the punch list, so we're still waiting on those. We had a inspection, and one part of an inspection failed, so we're not putting students in there until all inspections are complete and properly, everything properly working. John, you want to add anything else to that? Is it good enough?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. John's been the one that takes care of meeting with the construction people. We have started on the Central Hardin project, and it's proceeding along, and I think maybe a little structural work might be starting here in the next couple of weeks. All right, the rest of the agenda was pretty much standard. We have approval of a school district calendar committee, approval for West Hardin Middle School eighth grade to travel to Washington DC in April, and we received the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasure, activity fund balance, and approval of the fiscal year 22 working budget, and also the fiscal year 22 indirect cost rates. We've proven a stone-earth work bid for Central Hardin High School parking project there. We're going to add a little parking space for those students since we've taken about three-fourths of the parking lot out there in the construction project. And we have a couple of change orders, one of them was positive to us, and some of that is money we're going to be holding from some contractors that didn't do exactly what we expected out of them, but it will end up, and we'll be paying that money back out on hiring someone else to complete that job. And we've had some discussion on football fields, turf fields, and we've proven the school-wide fundraisers. So that's about the extent of this afternoon's meeting. If anyone, any other board members want to add anything to that, or you want to take anything out, or we're going to need a motion here in a minute, but we can discuss it before. Everybody good?
All right. I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, seeing five saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. And I guess we don't have any action items, new business? Anyone have any new business they need to bring up? All right. Superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Our students and our parents, we have been communicating with you about a new testing system called iReady. About 95% of our students have finished taking this assessment in grades K through eight. So as that testing is complete, that will give parents some very valuable information about your students' readiness level. This will be something your teachers will be communicating with you. There is homework or volunteer work, or if you tell them, I guess it would be voluntold work, of things they can do at home along the lines of iReady, called MyPath, and so your students will have that opportunity. And I was just counting up the months from the first date that we left school until we came and are still in difficult times, has been 15 months. So it is really, really important that our parents continue to do the great job that they are doing to assist, and this is one more tool that you're, you have to help your child during these times. So I just encourage you, when your teacher sends home that information, for you to feel free to contact them, ask for follow-ups so that you have that information. We have been studying those reports, looking at those, looking at individual reports. So I just encourage the parents who are here in the audience, the parents at home, to take advantage of that information to do the best we can to move those students forward. We will be meeting with our teachers to analyze those reports and talk about differentiation and what we can do to assist, but of course, if everyone is working together on that, that's going to increase the likelihood of success. Also, just want to do a huge shout-out to our teachers. The amount of stress that they are in each day with what is being asked of them, of students being at home, the students in the classroom, and trying to do their very best to make the accommodations needed to meet those needs. There's never been a time that teachers have been asked to do more than what they are doing right now. I won't say that they're having to do more with less, that is not the case. We are definitely resource-rich within our district, truly blessed with resources. We are definitely resource-rich within our district, truly blessed with resources, but time and energy that is put into that is significant. So a huge shout-out to our teachers. If you get a chance to give them a thank you for all of their hard work, I know they would appreciate that. So again, for the parents, if you will reach out to your teachers, or wait for them to reach out when they have a chance to go through all that, we just are finishing in the next couple of days, I think you will find that as a great resource for your students. So just a sales pitch there for Mr. Sutton and our instructional services department, but most importantly, for all of our students in Harden County. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We need a short executive session, and board calendar is October the 4th through the 8th, school will be dismissed, fall break, and then October the 11th, school will be dismissed again. And next meeting, we need to discuss that here in a little while, we'll have our executive session, but it looks like maybe October the 21st is a regional board meeting for our region, and it's held in Barstown this year. So the date that they have set is the day that we have our normal board meeting, so more than likely, we're probably going to move or have a special meeting to cover the October the 21st, 6:00 PM meeting, so, but we'll, everyone will be notified in advance on it, but we probably, when we get our schedules worked out, that's what we're going to do, is change that meeting date to a special meeting. And, yeah, it states it there, KSBA is fourth region meeting, it's October 21st. So if we will, we'll have a motion to go into executive session, and we possibly will take action after this executive session.
What's the purpose of the executive session?
Litigation.
Litigation.
So I move we go into executive, brief executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we're going to step into a smaller boardroom here and take a few minutes for it. We are now back in regular session, and no action is going to be taken on possible litigation tonight, so. Anyone else don't have anything, we're good to go with a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for standing.